But you got me curious that. What's the market in general?
Welcome everyone to our Planning Commission meeting, today, March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five. We'll begin today by Commissioner Johnson. I'll say the opening prayer and then we'll have Commissioner Marchbanks lead us in the, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity to meet together and discuss the applications before the city. We're grateful for all the many blessings that that has given us and I see that please bless us with guidance as we determine what's best for the citizens and for those who live here. We're grateful for this country and for the opportunity to have to live in a peaceful place and say the same things in Jesus Christ's name.
Would all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin our meeting tonight with a, an audible roll call of the Commissioners. Sharon Call.
Here.
Mike Marchbanks.
Here.
Rob Callis.
Here.
Steve Johnson, here. Scott Thompson is excused. Jared Showers.
Here.
Karen Danielson.
Here.
And Ryan Doan, our alternate, is also excused today. The next item on the agenda is an approval of the minutes from our last meeting, March eleventh, two thousand and twenty five. The Commissioners have received these beforehand and have had a chance to review them. Are there any corrections to the minutes or additions?
Just on line twenty six. My name is spelled wrong.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, the other thing I noticed is that Commissioner Marchbanks was left off the votes. He was present when he voted.
I heard that too. I wasn't here, but I.
I thought somebody thought I was, I was here, but I wasn't here.
Well, especially on the, on the second one, he made the motion, so I'm assuming, I'm assuming he should have voted. So, other than that, I think they looked good. Anything else anybody else saw? Okay, then do we have a motion to approve the minutes with those small corrections?
Seconded.
We have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The voting is unanimous. We'll move to item number three on our agenda. This is a time for public comment. So if there's anyone here who would like to address the Commission on an item that's not on the agenda, now is the time. Is there anybody here for that purpose? Okay, not seeing any. We'll move on to item four of our agenda. This is a conditional use review of a single-family home addition in the Hillside Protection District. And the address of that is six twenty, or sixty-two South Denali Circle. The applicant is Scott Dent. Is someone, is Scott here or someone, if you want to come up, then we can ask you questions and you can sign in. Thank you for coming. Our, we'll time, turn the time over to Mike Florence to present to us his application.
Thank you Commissioners. It's great to be here with you tonight. So this item is for an addition to the home at, to the existing home at sixty-two South Denali Circle. The applicant is seeking the approval and there's a couple of reasons why you're hearing this. The first is our, our city code requires that, that we have this hillside protection overlay district, which applies to any lot or parcel that has a slope of twenty to twenty-five, or greater, sorry. Any, a slope of twenty percent or greater. And so if you have that on your lot, you, you qualify under this hillside protection district. In addition, the, the subdivision plat also said that under the Canberra Heights Plat A, all lots in that subdivision are applicable to the hillside overlay zone. And so that's why we're here tonight. Originally, when this subdivision was reviewed, there was a geotechnical study performed for the entire subdivision, but tonight we're specifically talking about this individual lot. So this, this one is a little bit different than what we normally do. Typically, we would come to you with a, a number of reports. We'd come to you with a soils report and a geotechnical report. In this instance, the geotechnical engineer has recommended that we do some, that they do some excavation first. And so with the hillside, they'll be excavating down at least twenty-two feet. And it's his recommendation that they do the excavation first and then bring this back to you on a second meeting that, with that soils report and geology report.
Who, who's doing the geotechnical work? Do you, do you know?
Yeah, so, so the letter that was submitted to us was from, it's Exhibit Two, I G E S. Couple of the reports that you were provided were the, I misspelled that word. It's not guarding, but it's grading, grading and drainage plan. And so that's what identifies the twenty percent slope on the property. We also looked at what will happen to the drainage that will, what will happen to the drainage after this home is built. There's a letter providing, provided to you from the civil engineer stating that all of the gray, all of the water drainage will be able to be accommodated on site. There's a fire protection report that was provided by Orem City stating that they'll have sufficient access. They actually rec, they actually are supportive of this because it removes some of the vegetation next to the home. And so if we go to this slide here, the, the area with the red circle, that's where the addition will be. Those, that oak brush will be removed. And so that's one thing the, the fire department did recognize is that having that vegetation so close to the home does cause a hazard. So, the other thing that was provided was a vegetation plan and we'll go through that in a minute as well. Any questions so far on, on why we're here and some of the items that have been, we've discussed so far?
Maybe just an educational thing for me. When you say excavate to get that sample, we're talking, you're talking about data. The colars are boring. But not for the full foundation, right? You're just doing a.
That's what they're suggesting.
You, you want to excavate for the whole foundation?
That's what they would like to do, yes.
And then if it doesn't look good, they gotta bury that.
Well, they'll, their engineer will have an idea of what he needs to do to mitigate that or.
So it's not a yes or no. It's like, okay, well, this is what we find, this is what you've got to do to engineer it so that it's stable. Okay.
Yep. And I forgot to introduce you to Bryce McConkey. I don't know if you've met Bryce yet. He's our building official. And, and so he will correct me on any of these items that I'm discussing and Bryce, please jump in as well, so.
Twenty-two feet, sorry. That twenty-two feet is measured from where? Like where the driveway is or where, where it's clear, because it slopes quite a bit.
It does. It slopes there from the driveway down because it's on that hillside, so.
Twenty-two feet from the level of the driveway.
Yeah, and it's a walkout on the back.
Yeah, I figured it was, yeah.
Is it gonna be an extra tall foundation there? Sub, subgrade, how deep, how, how tall are the walls gonna be in the basement?
The, the walls in the basement, well, the foundation will be twenty-two feet.
That is gonna be twenty-two feet, so you're twenty-two feet.
Correct.
From grade, okay.
I had the same question that Jared had, mainly for my educational purposes. So are they gonna excavate three feet below the bottom of the footing? So you'll be putting your footings on backfill?
You'll just sit up there too.
No, yeah, feel free, yep.
That twenty-two feet is probably the bottom of the footing.
Three feet below the footing.
If I can, if I can explain that as well. So you've got the, the geotechnical engineer and a geologist, both look at the soil types. The geotechnical engineer will look at the groundwater level as well, which is where the three feet comes from. They're actually proposing doing a pool in there. So the excavation is actually gonna be another nine-plus feet deeper than that for the pool itself. For the structure, the, the concern, of course, is the intent of the, of the ordinance like this is to determine the soil types. Any hazards? Do we have any faults and fissures along this area and so forth? And so that's the, this approach of excavation first and allowing them to excavate where it's an addition could, while it does, you know, carry some level of risk which would be borne by the owner and builder, it does seem to be reasonable for them to be able to open up and see what, what do we have here, rather than doing an exploratory hole or trench that they typically do twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six feet deep right next to a house. It seems to be much more reasonable to allow them to bear that risk and do that full excavation.
Well, on number four, A, it says, "A test pit to a depth of three feet below the proposed footing elevation."
And that's the.
That's just a test hole?
That's a test hole to determine
Okay.
groundwater level.
Yeah, you're not putting any footings on backfill.
Yeah, yeah, they won't be doing it in their feet.
I'm sure the engineers know what they're doing.
They'll probably dig that where the pool's gonna go.
Did I read somewhere in here, and I, I think I did, where it talked about if, if all of this, you know, all the studies and everything are completed and they determine that this, this isn't gonna work in this area, then the applicant has to restore it to what it originally was, right?
Correct.
And so what we're voting on tonight actually is just to give the applicant approval to go ahead with the excavation then. Is that?
That, that is correct. And we have a number of conditions about that, that this is only the excavation and then the, and I'll get to that in a few minutes, but then, once the geology and soils reports are finished, then we'll come back for a second meeting so that you so give city staff to review the documents, make any recommendations, and then you can review those as well with the engineers that require, or recommendations.
It appears that there are, I mean, and I can understand that because I know that area. There are some concerns that if this isn't done just right, it could open up, not only the, the applicant to some problems and liability, but also the city if it doesn't, isn't done just right.
Yep.
Isn't that true?
Essentially, any, any risk to the city would be required to be mitigated.
Right.
So that the, ultimately what we want is the geologist and the geotechnical engineer to bear the liability for, now they can't dig to the center of the earth, of course, but to, to make reasonable, you know, determination on whether or not this is gonna be buildable, which I suspect that it will be. It's just what kind of mitigation requirements were.
The fact that there's a home that's been there for, I don't know, twenty years at this point, I'm, I'm assuming you guys have looked at that home, see if there's even been any kind of settlement or shifting or changing. I mean, I, I think you can move forward with some confidence based on that.
Where there's a home already there, I, I don't, I wasn't here, of course, when the house was built. Uh, we were not able to locate a geotechnical or geologist's reports back then. So from my comfort level as a building official, along with the, the city ordinance requirements and with unrecorded plat, there needs to be some sort of exploration and it seems that allowing them at their risk to move forward with excavation and then, and then stop until we get a full determination.
Right.
What that's gonna look like moving forward, I think that that's reasonable.
Yeah, it looked to me like that's exactly what this was all about, was just taking the guesswork out of what needs to be done to mitigate without over-guessing or under-guessing or whatever. So it seems real reasonable to me.
If this was an empty lot, then they would do the exploration first. They wouldn't do the full excavation. They'd be doing test pits and test trenches and then dig the full depth. But on this, in this case, it's all landscape to scout houses next to it. I just, in my opinion, I think that that wouldn't be reasonable.
So as we discussed, here's the letter from the I G, I G E S, you know, recommending these requirements that, you know, they excavate, do the test fit, test pit, do the samples, and then prepare the geotechnical and geologic reports for the city to review. Uh, this is the addition to the home. You can see the existing home and then the, the three-story walkout addition that you'll see here. That first level is a, is a pool. The next two levels are living quarters for the home. Just a couple of different views from that. So site plan, you can see where the addition will be in relation to the, on the site and in the existing home. One of the things the ordinance requires that you can't grade closer than twenty feet from the property line or out thirty feet from the structure, further than thirty feet. And you can see we meet those requirements where, where less than twenty feet, or more than twenty feet from the property line. Here's the grading and drainage plan, again, shows the twenty and twenty-five percent slopes on that area where the addition will go. Again, drainage plant, excuse me, drainage plant, letter from the engineer. Uh, that last sentence, "We're confident that the finished landscape site will contain any additional drainage created by the new construction." Fire report from the Orem fired, uh, fire marshal. This is the new landscaping plan for the site. One of the, and it looks great. One of the things that we do require is that they need to provide a letter from their landscaper, the landscape company doing this work, that, you know, they're not, they won't be causing any additional hazards with this landscaping. So basically, they're not putting up, you know, trees that will cause it more of an impact than, you know, what's existing on, on the site. And going back, sorry, let me go back one to this fire report. This, the, the Orem fire doesn't address this, but on the subdivision plat, there is a requirement that they need to verify the water pressure and flow rates prior to construction and obtaining a building permit. And so you'll see that in one of the conditions of approval, that they need to check those requirements before Bryce and the city issues that building permit for the addition. Uh, here's the subdivision plat. It's, it's Lot Eleven up here. It requires that the minimum building site be twenty-five hundred square feet. This more than accommodates that. It requires that it not encroach into the aqueduct, which it does not. And, and, you know, so we haven't, we found that it meets the requirements of the subdivision plat and the notes that are on the plat requiring, you know, additional studies and observations for the foundation and excavation. You know, those are, those are part of the conditions of approval. Let me go back to conditions of approval. She's noted in your staff report, there's, there's a number of conditions and that this motion would be to approve the applicant's request for excavation of the site at sixty-two South Denali Circle for the single-family home with the following conditions: That the geotechnical engineer's recommendations outlined in the engineer's letter dated March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five shall be followed for further study of the excavation area. A building permit will be issued and appropriate fees paid for excavation only in the area of the residential addition. No further work beyond excavation shall be performed until geotechnical study and geology reports are submitted, reviewed, and approved by all applicable city departments and presented for approval at the second planning commission meeting. Updated building plans incorporating the recommendations from the geotechnical engineer and geologist shall be submitted for full building plan review. Mitigation measures outlined in the Linden City Ordinance, seventeen fifty-seven Hillside Overlay District and adopted interpretations will be addressed in the geotechnical and geology reports. In the, I think it was the late nineties, this sec, uh, the Planning Commission adopted three or four pages of interpretations of the ordinance. And so that helps guide our direction as we're, we're reviewing proposals in the hillside overlay zone. Uh, number six is regarding the, the flows for fire. It says, "Compliance with Canberra Heights Plat A subdivision plat note, which states that the minimum square footage home allowed without additional fire protection measures being employed is ninety-four hundred square foot, square feet, type five-end construction based on twenty-five hundred gallons per minute fire flow with residual pressure at twenty P S I, or an alternative approved by the building official." So the, um, this is, this is. Oh, sorry, maximum, thank you. And then we added this on here. "Or an alternative approved by the building official fire marshal and planning commission. Homeowners shall verify water pressure and flow rates and submit a report to the city engineer and building official simultaneously with the required geotechnical and geology reports. A written statement by the landscaper or another qualified person or firm will be submitted to the city for review by the planning commission before final approval. This statement must address any vegetation problems and further stating an opinion as to the ability of the proposed plan to mitigate or eliminate such problems in a manner as to prevent hazards to life or property, adverse effects on safe, on the safety, user stability of the public way or drainage channel and adverse, and adverse impact on the natural environment." That's, that's just straight out of our hillside ordinance and then all items of the staff report. So, with that, do you have any additional questions for us?
What's the address of this? I mean, I, I see the ninety-two. What east is that? Yeah, but how far east is it?
I'll go to the.
Kind of going up Dry Canyon.
Here it is highlighted in blue.
It's gonna be a little bit to the west of that street.
Yeah. Where, where is our twelfth East Road that we've been discussing recently go by this?
Close to it.
Yeah, just, you can see the, the home highlighted in blue where the property is. Twelve Hundred East Road is just west of, of that. It, it's a little ways away.
Okay. Is that where it ends? Where you're pointing?
Twelve Hundred East, yeah, let me, it ends, it ends right here.
I mean, where will it go if it goes through it someday, ever?
Yeah.
North of Pleasant Grove.
No, south, how far?
It, so would it, right now it ends here. And so it would come across to, this is the right-of-way the city owns. So it would connect between here and that highlighted blue section.
So where the residents were saying it would be a commuter road for Orem, how are they gonna get there?
Well, it tees into two thousand north, two hundred south Linden, going to the south.
Yeah, it tees in right here.
I'm talking about on the south end.
On the south.
We all build. Everything's in south.
Yeah, there we go.
There's that connection.
So now scroll out so I can just and put your cursor on his, oh, there it is, okay. You, there you go.
Oh, sorry, it's right in the, yeah, keeps covering it, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, I see it, okay. Fine, thank you.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant?
As long as all we're approving at this point is the excavation and then the testing.
It's from the applicant. You wouldn't be here if you weren't, but are you willing to bear that risk of the excavation? You know, hopefully it all works, but I'm assuming, yeah.
I always bear the risk, so. I am the builder. It always falls on my shoulders.
So, I mean, as long as, I'm good with it as long as, you know, he understands the, the process. I think there's a high probability it'll be approved, but we have to wait for those reports to see.
Everything can be mitigated.
Yeah.
Looks good to me.
Okay. If there aren't any more questions, anything from staff?
No, I read through all those, so if you wanna say, make the motion one through eight.
Okay.
You don't have to reread them.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. I move to approve the applicant's request for excavation of the site at sixty-two South Denali Circle for the single-family or the potential single-family home addition with the following conditions that have already been read, items one through eight.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I can second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to excavate is unanimous, so good luck. Can you back shortly? I guess, I don't know, shortly, however long, however long it takes to get everything done.
I'm just interested, what is the square footage of the home that's already there? I'm familiar with it, but. Yeah, okay, that's what I, she asked me and I said about seven or eight thousand, yeah. That's awesome, yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to item number five of our report, which is our open and public meetings training tonight.
Yep, we're just gonna watch a video for that. The Utah Trust put together a, a quick seven-minute video and so I just wanted to show that and, and we'll go from there.
So what is the Open and Public Meetings Act? It's the state law that ensures government actions and deliberations are openly conducted. Before we continue, keep in mind that this video is an overview and exceptions may exist based on your entity type. We focus on local government, not state requirements. When in doubt, read the law and consult with your legal counsel. So what's considered an open and public meeting? It's when a public body quorum, also known as a simple majority, meets to discuss or act upon government business. It includes the meetings sometimes referred to as workshops or executive sessions. Regular meetings, public hearings, electronic meetings, and emergency meetings are all open and public meetings. Open and public meetings don't include chants or social meetings. A public hearing is a type of open and public meeting where citizens have a reasonable opportunity to speak. Public hearings happen when a government adopts a budget, imposes or increases taxes or fees, or transfers money from an enterprise fund. These meetings have extra notice and posting requirements and won't be addressed in this video. An electronic meeting is a type of open and public meeting that's convened electronically, such as via phone or the internet. Remember, the governing body must adopt a resolution, rule, or ordinance allowing and governing electronic meetings. ATMA adds additional requirements too. An emergency meeting may be held to discuss an urgent matter due to unforeseen circumstances. In order to hold the meeting, the best notice that's feasible is provided of the time, location, and topics to be considered. An attempt is made to contact all governing body members and a governing body majority approves the meeting. An open and public meeting may be closed to discuss any of the following: A person's character, competence, or health, collective bargaining, litigation, certain real property transactions, including any form of a water right or water shares with specific restrictions, security personnel, devices, or systems deployment, investigations of criminal misconduct, and private or protected information per the Utah procurement code, including trade secrets. A closed meeting may be held only if a quorum is present and the meeting was properly noticed. Two-thirds of the governing body present at the meeting need to vote yes to close a meeting. Quick math lesson, two divided by three equals sixty-six point seven percent. Let's say your governing body has five members present at the meeting. If three out of five members vote yes, that equals sixty percent, which is not equal or greater than sixty-six point seven percent, which means you're one member short and would need four out of five members to vote yes. During a closed meeting, a governing body can't interview someone applying to fill an elected position, discuss filling a midterm vacancy or temporary absence, discuss the character, competence, or health of a person whose name was submitted for consideration to fill a midterm vacancy or temporary absence, approve any ordinance, resolution, rule, regulation, contract, or appointment, or take a vote unless it's a vote on a. or take a vote, unless it's a vote on a motion to end the closed portion of the meeting, and return to an open meeting. When a governing body closes a meeting, the following must be publicly announced and entered into the minutes of the open meeting at which the closed meeting was approved: the reason or reasons for holding the closed meeting, the location where the closed meeting will be held, and the vote of each member of the governing body either for or against the motion to close the meeting. If a closed meeting is discussing a person's character, competence, or health, or security personnel, devices, or systems deployment, or several other exceptions, mostly related to state bodies or project entities, no recording or minutes are required. However, the presiding member needs to sign a sworn written statement stating such. If the closed meeting is held for any other reason, a recording must be made, which includes date, time, and place of the meeting, names of members present and absent, and names of all others, except where disclosure would infringe on the confidentiality necessary to fulfill the original purpose of closing the meeting. Regular open and public meetings require twenty-four hours' notice. The public notice includes the meeting, agenda, date, time, and place. Public meeting agendas need to include reasonably specified topics to be considered, with each topic listed under a separate agenda item on the meeting agenda. The governing body may not consider a topic in an open meeting that wasn't on the agenda. If a new topic not on the agenda is raised by the public during an open meeting, the governing body may discuss the topic. However, final action may not be taken on the new topic during that meeting. Additionally, entities holding regular meetings scheduled in advance over the course of the year need to provide annual notice of the entire year's meeting schedule. The notice must include date, time, and place for each meeting. Notice is posted on the public body's website, in a public location such as the location where the meeting will be held, and on Utah's public notice website in accordance with Utah Code sixty-three G dash thirty dash one oh two. Typically, posting on the public notice website is done by the records officer, recorder, or clerk. However, it's the governing body's responsibility to ensure notice is provided. State Archives has prepared a training manual and quick guide for owners and posters, as well as training videos that can be accessed at their website, archives dot utah dot gov. Written minutes and a recording are kept of all open meetings, with few exceptions. Written minutes include the date, time, and place of the meeting, the names of members present and absent, the substance of all matters, names of citizens providing comments, the substance of the comments provided, any information a body member requests be entered into the minutes or recording, and a record by individual member of each vote taken. A body with elected members must record each vote in list format by category for each action taken by a member, including yes votes, no votes, and absent members next to each member's name. A recording must be a complete and unedited record of all open portions of the meeting from beginning to end, and be labeled with the meeting date, time, and place. All or any part of an open meeting may be independently recorded by any person in attendance if the recording does not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Pending minutes means written minutes of an open meeting in draft form subject to change before being approved by the public body that held the open meeting. Pending minutes must contain a clear indication, such as a draft or pending watermark, that the governing body hasn't yet approved the minutes, and that the minutes are subject to change until the public body approves them. Approved minutes means written minutes of an open meeting approved by the public body that held the open meeting. Entities must establish and implement procedures for the public body's approval of written minutes. Public meeting pending minutes, approved minutes, and recordings are public records under grammar. Any individual who publicly presents information relating to an item on the public body's meeting agenda must provide a copy of the information for inclusion in the public record. Make pending minutes available to the public within thirty days. Within three business days after approving written minutes of an open meeting, make approved minutes and any public materials available at the Utah Public Notice website, the entity's primary office, and the entity's website. Within three business days after holding an open meeting, make an audio recording of the open meeting available to the public for listening.
Sorry, I said those meeting minutes were by the trust, they were from the state auditor's office, so. Any questions about open public meetings?
I have some questions for the board.
Yeah.
The closed meeting portion, we talked about, have to have a recording of all present and all not present. And it also stipulated that everybody there, when you have city council or full sessions, you need a call. You have their notes, which council members are not there. But I don't remember her ever saying, "An additional people present," including Matt Florence, Al Academy, and the others.
That's on our minutes, though.
Yeah, I think it's... Yeah, I, I, it's probably something we need to address, yeah.
I don't know if they-
Well, that's just for when, he's, he's talking about for city council closed-door meetings.
Oh, I see what you mean.
What other staffer, you know, that might be there, we-
I see what you mean, okay.
Yeah.
I'm reading the code here, it says on everyone else who's present in the meeting.
Yeah.
So I think we didn't need that written, it was first by this, which is important.
For Planning Commission, there, I've been doing this for, you know, nineteen years, and I've never had a closed-door meeting with a Planning Commission, but, you know, there could be if there's pending litigation or that you need to be made aware of, or-
Seems like we've almost had one a time or two, but never have.
I was just thinking of, you know, you know, on our minutes, it lists everyone there, not just the commissioners. You know, and then also those that are absent.
Yep.
So the only question I had that, and Brittany does a great job, everybody, the things are posted, but it says that's really our responsibility, that's the only thing I, you know, I noticed in there that, the posting of the meeting and everything. And so I don't know what we need to do to make sure we're checking that box, that we've done it.
I believe in the city code, it designates that we're, you know, we're staff to the Planning Commission, and so that allows us to, to post those items for you on your behalf.
It says they post them, but I guess ultimately, is there a way, or should I be verifying that they were posted before we start the meeting? That's the only thing I caught from there, is there a verification process required of this body before we?
So we put it on the bottom of your agenda, it's, it's small, but if you go, let me go back to that.
Oh, I see it there, okay, so that, that's the way we can verify that it was posted?
Oh, yeah, we put that what time we are posting the agenda, and then what buildings, and the city website, the state website.
That, I'm sure that then fulfills that requirement that it was posted.
Been delegated.
Yeah.
But I guess this then fulfills our due diligence that it has been.
That's, that's all I had with those two items.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we'll move on to item six, is a report from our community development director, and any, any items from the commissioners.
Only thing I have is, I don't know if it'll be on the next meeting or the meeting after that, but we're, we're working on updating our standard land use table, so that it says, you know, here's all of our different zoning districts, here's the uses that are allowed. We, we're updating it for all the different alcohol types of uses, whether it's a full, full restaurant license, or a tavern, or, you know, a banquet license, or, you know, all the different types, there's ten different types of alcohol licenses, off-premise, on-premise alcohol. And so we'll be adding those to our standard land use table and, and bringing that to you, so. So you'll have to be thinking, where do we want all the bars, or, just kidding, you know, where, where do we want our restaurants that serve, you know, full alcohol, or, you know, things like that, so.
Okay. Anything from, anything else from, okay, anything from any of the commissioners that need to be brought up today? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Wow, we did good, holy smokes.
That's, that was a quick one.